All right, welcome everyone to six P M. Six to eight. I like to start on time, game on time. I appreciate you guys coming out, taking time out of your evening to sit here and hear what's going on in District Six. As the format has been in the past, we have the staff do all their presentations and then at the end we do Q and A. So write your questions down as you go. We'll be here to interrupt. I'm not sure if you received your Lake Ridge Community Center survey that was sent in the mail. Please go out and fill that out because I've heard they're gonna stop the survey, cut it off the end of this month. With that being said, I don't have much more to say. I would not go ahead and get the agenda started because I know some of the presenters are gonna have, they're probably over their time. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mayor Ryan Jensen to come up here and speak in regards to the Epic Central and the tax exemption that we voted on this year. Mayor Jensen.
So Epic Central first. My goodness, it's just, I think exceeded all of our expectations, especially after Eluvia has gone up. It's made the news on the channels. If you haven't seen it, the light show, it's seven thirty, eight thirty, nine thirty, ten thirty. Once it gets dark, it's animated. It's fun. It's exciting. It's free. I was out there at eight thirty Friday night, got there about six and there was nobody there. By, by seven thirty, busy. By eight thirty, when it got dark, it was packed. But there's plenty of parking. People drive through. If you go into the parking lot and there's Chicken and Pickle on your left, but there's a two hundred plus parking garage on your right and has a sign out front tells you how many spaces are open. And just like at the airport now, if the space is open, it has a green light. And if it's not, it's red. So you look down and say, there's an opening down there. So Vedora is set to open up maybe the end of this month, maybe not, but it opened up probably at least by the end of November. It's right next door to the Finch. So we have Loop Nine, the place to the Finch upscale. I joked, we didn't have a place that you could spend fifty dollars and get a steak. You can get two and a drink at our steak houses. Two steaks and a drink. Well, now you can, you can have a forty five dollar steak there and it's delicious. Now you don't have to order a forty five dollar steak. There are thirty eight dollar ones also. There's a wide range of menu items. I've gone there. I love it. If you go sit outside, watch the water show. The Vedora is right next door. It's gonna have a balcony overlooking the water show. We just approved last night a new Italian restaurant that's going in out there. So along the Frontage Road, you pass one south, you pass Chicken and Pickle, then you come to two separate standalone buildings. One of those is gonna, this is before you get over to Twin Peaks and Dutch Brothers. This is still on our Epic Central property. One of the standalone buildings will be post. It's kind of like First Watch, but it's all day breakfast. It's not gonna close it too. Post. The same company that owns the Finch, Vedora and Sirius Eats, which is supposed to open up, should open up by the end of the year, which is right next to Vedora. Sirius Eats got another spot. He's doing a new concept called Post. Just this week, Tuesday night, we approved our staff to contract with a new Italian place in the other building. I don't remember her name, but she was on Master Chef with Gordon Ramsay. She'll be the executive chef at this Italian place. So the two hotels and conference center are gonna open up in December. We're gonna have a real small soft opening in December, but a big huge opening for everything in February. Stay tuned for that, that will help open everything up. So that's the remaining part of Epic Central, which is on, the land is owned by the city. We have one hard corner left. As you go south of one sixty one, you pass Chicken and Pickle, then those two restaurants I told you were Italian places and Post. Then there is the hard corner that's still available. We're not gonna let just anything go there. You know, it's, it's, it's not gonna be a seven eleven. It's gonna have to be big. We would prefer a all multi-part, I mean, a full service hotel, maybe a autograph collection, something like that. But we just can't say that's what we want and they'll come. We gotta wait until the activity gets up enough and the room nights of the Marriott close by, the room nights at our Hiltons, the room nights at the Marriott across the street, generate enough income to where they're looking at, say, it can sustain another hotel, but that, we don't need it to be big. But we want, I and the whole council staff want a place to stay in Grand Prairie where you can have full service. And so that's what we're aiming for. Hopefully get it. So as you see across the street south of IKEA, Andretti's is going up. That was the first building. Behind it is Bass Pro. It's going up. And then soon, big shots of competitors, Top Golf will go in that same location. So right around that, there's still space available. Across the street, there's a lot of retail space available. So we have room to expand and room to add more retail and restaurants along there. I think that hits all the highlights of Epic Central. It's, 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 it's going great. It's epic. It's doing, it's doing really good. Can't wait for the conference center to open up. How many of you have been to the Ruthie Jackson Center for any event? The Ruthie Jackson Center, Chip and I were talking, where's Chip? Chip raising his hand. Chip and I were talking about it. It can do five hundred to six hundred in rounds of eight. That means you're sitting and having dinner. This new conference center, I did verify, Michelle, it will fit eight hundred. That's huge. So it gives us a step up. Let's say it does seven hundred. And normally when we do it, Ruthie Jackson, we max it out maybe five fifty. We don't try to squeeze six hundred in there a lot of times. So give us another couple hundred people in there for events. The, let's talk about the tax rate. We kept the tax rate at sixty six, a point six six. We've reduced the tax rate twice the last few years, a half a penny at a time. But we have decided these last three years, a half a penny takes, hits the budget the same as a two and a half percent increase in the homestead. For the last three years in a row, we've increased the homestead by two and a half percent. Now we're at fifteen percent. The council feels like it's better to give the homeowners a two and a half percent increase when it's the same money as a half a penny that goes across the whole city. A two and a half percent increase in the homestead exemption is equivalent to us giving you a two penny reduction in your tax rate as a homeowner. So the three, two and a half percent increases is the same as giving you a six penny decrease in your tax rate. We just chose to do it through the homestead exemption. We have, it's capped at twenty percent. We're at fifteen now. We know we're gonna do at least a two and a half next year and we're gonna the election in Austin is always in the even numbered years and they meet in the odd numbers year, numbered years. We're gonna ask the state legislature to increase the homestead exemption from twenty percent to thirty or forty. Please get out and vote this year. It doesn't affect your city taxes. It affects your overall taxes because your bill is, the biggest portion of the bill is what? School taxes. By far, the city's about a twenty six, seven percent, county about twenty three, twenty four, school districts, fifty percent of your tax bill. What's the big item in November? Voting to increase the homestead exemption from forty percent to, no, from, yeah, no, from forty thousand to a hundred thousand. It can't go from forty percent to a hundred percent. That, we'd all vote for that, wouldn't we? So it's going from forty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand. That's the way the state legislature chose to help. Since the legislative, since they say that Texas made so much money, that's how they chose to get it back to the citizens to help reduce your tax rate in the school tax, but if hey, you have to pass that amendment, increases them forty thousand to a hundred thousand. So like I said, Councilmember Johnson's on the finance committee and we pretty much committed internally. We've got to do the math that we will be able to increase the homestead another two and a half next year and that would get it to seventeen and a half. And then the following year, the final two and a half will try to get the legislature slater to raise it for us. So hang on, there's been more announcements coming on Epic Central soon and around there. Can't wait till Landretti's indoor party opens up, IKEA's open up, Bass Pro. Big shots should start soon. So it's gonna be a lot of fun right there in that quarter. Thank you very much.
I thank the mayor for coming out to give you the presentation. The mayor may not be here for the end for Q and As because he has a previous case to go to. So just want to thank the mayor for coming out to give you an update. Next we have is the all anticipated. Oh, need to recognize Councilmember Junior Zono who's come in and our new city manager, Bill Hills. Thank you guys. Well, Bree from, I mean, Police Department. I would be Paw Patrol. Junior knows the bill. Chief Sessi, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. So I got asked to address a couple of different issues tonight. One, I'm gonna start with our crime rate, crime decreases. And I want to break that up into two different areas, if I may. One is what the backs are, the numbers are. And then I want to talk about something that I consider equally important is the perception of crime. So let's first talk about the numbers and what they are. Across the city, crime is down by two percent. District six is probably the safest district in our city. We're down about sixteen percent so far year to date. Auto thefts are down and vehicle burglaries are down markedly in, in all of those areas. Those are things I was asked specifically to address. However, let's talk about the perception of crime. The bane of my existence, although I think it's a great tool, is neighbor next door website. So the challenge that the next door website creates for the police department is that platform will not allow us to see what's going on. They view that as a privacy concern. So I have no earthly idea of what's being posted on Nextdoor. And I bring that to your attention because the mayor and Councilman Johnson asked me, I think it was Monday. Chief, what happened in Mar-a-Lago? We had fifteen auto thefts over the weekend. I'm like, well, not as far as I know, we didn't. Of course, you know, being a smart chief, I pick up the phone, I call my team and said, yeah, what the world? Completely false. We did have one, but just one. Now, let me tell you where there is some truth that I think is worth noting as it relates to auto thefts. And this is not unique to Grand Prairie. It's a nationwide phenomenon and it gets back to my love of social media. Some slipknot in the country put a TikTok video out about how easy it is to steal Hyundai's and Kia's. And since then, we have gotten decimated with auto thefts on Kia's and Hyundai's. So much so that the insurance industry is taking a second look on whether or not they're going to insure those types of vehicles. It's a very significant problem. We have tons of bait out there to try to catch people in the act. We arrested a number of people. And we, our intelligence team keeps our officers apprised of some of our frequent flyers so we can catch them. The other issues that we do is we have a lock system that's all over District Six. If you're not familiar with it, it captures license plates that are flagged for being involved in crime, felon, that sort of thing, and then alerts officers that are in the neighborhoods. And they jump on those and make a lot of quality arrests. So that's the auto theft issue. The other problem that we run into is professional thieves that come to us from other, our neighboring cities. And they help themselves to your items in your cars while you're sleeping. So vehicle burglaries, although they're down, it's still a major problem for us in all cities. And so let me tell you what we're doing about that. First of all, we patrol your city and your neighborhood while you're sleeping with drones. And the reason why we do that is because the professional thieves will come in, two will get out, they'll start walking down your, your streets and they'll start pulling door handles. If they find your car unlocked, they help themselves to your items and then they go to the next house and the next house. I, I've said this before, I love it that our city feels safe enough to keep the doors unlocked. I hate it that our city feels safe enough to keep the doors unlocked. So please lock your doors because they're not breaking the windows nearly as often. They're just going for targets of opportunity. So anyway, the drones will help us see a pattern of behavior. And so if we see someone that's out walking or exercising or even jogging, they're just doing just that. But if they're going up checking door handles, it's easy to see from the sky. It's very difficult for our patrol officers to see it because as they pull in with headlights, you know, those that are involved in various activities, see the headlights and suddenly they get this halo that appears above their head and they, they're doing everything on the street and they're on the way to church or the library or wherever else. So that's part of our crime fighting strategy. So that is crime decreases, social media and the problem with auto thefts. I was also asked to talk about Greenway Trails. I'll be honest with you, that kind of threw me off. Greenway Trails is like virtually no crime. I think we've had maybe six offenses total for the year. So I, that one, I'll be here afterwards. If there's something specific about Greenway Trails, let me know. It's a real new neighborhood. It's incredibly safe. Most of the offense of those six are family related stuff. So last thing I want to touch on, or sorry, two more quick things I was asked to touch on. Citizens Police Academy, if you're not familiar with it, I think you would enjoy it. It is an opportunity for you to come to the police department. We open up the doors. We let you do everything that the police officers do from driving, shooting. Homicide detectives come in. It's a multi-week course, but it shows you exactly how we do, what we do, why we do it. I think you would enjoy that if you have the time. I would encourage you to get with me afterward. We'll talk to you all about how to become a Citizens Police Academy alumni. And then this is not on the agenda, but I want to quickly touch on it because I got a lot of questions. And that is, how is this craziness in the Middle East impacting, or is any, any nexus to Grand Prairie in terms of your safety? The answer is not right now, no. So I, I'm part of the Joint Terrorism Task Force Executive Board with the FBI. I keep my finger on the pulse of everything related to the DFW area terror related, not just as it relates to Grand Prairie. As of just five minutes before I walked in the door, there is not anything that brings me any concern in the city of Grand Prairie. Now I will tell you that as you watch the news, there was a nationwide protest on both sides of the issues today and there's more scheduled for some of our neighbors tomorrow. None of that is touching Grand Prairie. In fact, our Sergeant, two of the lieutenant over our intelligence unit is one of your neighbors. He is in this room right now. And so if you have any difficult questions related to intelligence that I can't answer, I may elicit this help. So that is all I have. I don't have any retaliatory jokes for the councilmen, so I'll leave it there and wait.
Next we have code compliance, Ryan Simpson.
You were back there. How's everybody doing tonight? So I'll just talk about a couple of things related to code compliance. The first one is how to report a code complaint or a code violation that you may see. I'll cover four different ways to do that and you can use whichever way is easier for you. The first one is call us, nine seven two, two, three, seven, eight, two, nine, six. That's the main number for code and that's on the website. The second way is to email us, codecomplaints@gptx.org. That address is also up there. Third way is you can go to the city website and then I don't know if you can see it from, from where you're sitting, but at the top, there's a button that says report issue. So you can click that, pretty much any type of issue that may come across in the city, whether it's related to code or not, there's ways there to report online. And then the last way to cover is, is new and you can actually send us a text message. And that's not just for code issues, that's for other issues that you may see out in the city too. So I believe the number for that is nine seven two, six, four, oh, four, seven, eight, nine, which is the GPTX. So six, four, oh, GPTX. You can go on there, send text messages and that goes to staff, whatever the type of issue is, and they'll take care of it. And they, they'll have your contact information. You can reach out if they need to follow. The other thing I wanted to mention is what's new in our fiscal year 2024 budget. So city council approved four new positions for code compliance. One position is dedicated to handling issues at commercial properties throughout the city. The other is dedicated to handling issues at vacant properties throughout the city. And then two for a new, what we're calling an abatement crew. So they'll be doing legal dumping cleanups and other types of cleanup activities around the city. Okay, that's all for y'all tonight. Thank you.
The courses come at the end, at the end. I made that, or you can, you can put it to the side, we're gonna do it at the end. Fire chief, Robert Flight, gonna talk about the fire department, what's going on Station Eleven and EMS services.
I'm gonna bore you with stats and how everything's decreasing. So thank you for being here. So let's talk a little bit about your city because it's important to understand the, the fire department and some of the challenges we face. Up to the northern border, we, we go past Trinity Boulevard. So we almost border DFW area. To our south, our ETJ touches Venus. So if you think about the airport in Venus, we're talking over thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five miles and we're about three or four miles wide. So you add a robust highway system, you add rail system, you add a very industrial area we have, you add the lake, you add the horse track. This is a really cool place to be a firefighter. Really is. We have a lot of activity. It's a great city. We're supported, but it is unique because of the length though. So about this district, you have a fire station by the lake, Fire Station Seven, which houses an ambulance and a truck. It's where our dive team is. You also have a fire station down here on Grand Peninsula, Fire Station Ten, which has a fire engine and ambulance. So you have two ambulances, an engine and a truck covering your district down here. Fire Station Ten has a working lighthouse. I always say this because it is the truth. A ship has yet to hit our station, so it is working. I actually had Spike complain about, oh, I can't believe you spent that money on a lighthouse. And I used that joke when he was here. Everybody thought it was funny but him. So it is a, it is a very nice fire station and I know a lot of you visit it a lot and we appreciate that. So Fire Station Eleven, we are building a new fire station off of Old Davis Road. So near the corner of three sixty and two eighty-seven, right by, I think it's Greenway, Greenway Hills or whatever that neighborhood is. Raver Trails. And you also got to know there's a lot of other city property that is being developed down south. So we're trying to catch up and get it ready for all that growth down south. We may have fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand people in that area one day. So Fire Station Eleven will break ground in January. We've already got the land. We've already got the architect. We've already destroyed the building that was on that site. And so around March of twenty twenty-five, you will have a fire station down south. Hopefully, if you live down south, if you live down south and your insurance carrier is rating you as an ISO ten, you need to call me. Let me get with there. Because progressive farmers and other insurance carriers, because we have a fire station, bought land and we're about to break ground, they will give you insurance credit for that. It can be a four to five hundred dollar savings on your premium. So get my, before we leave, if you live down south and your insurance is too high, get with me and we'll make sure we try to get that down because you deserve the credit because we already have a plan for Fire Station Eleven. Related to ambulance service, we run the ambulance service here in Grand Prairie. Our neighbors to the west, Arlington, they don't run the ambulance service. It's a private service. It could go under any day. So we are very proud to have the ambulance service here. One of the major complaints I get about the ambulance service, I just want to address it with you, is, you know, my mom lives on the peninsula. I live in Irving. I wanted the ambulance to take her to Beta Irving. Well, that means we're passing Methodist Mansfield, we're passing MCA, we're passing four or five hospitals. Medicare, Medicaid, your insurance will deny the payment because we passed other hospitals. And it's just not what's best for the system. So we try to take you to the closest, most appropriate hospital. If it's trauma related, we can take you to Methodist Mansfield or MCA. If it's stroke related, we can take you there. If it's heart attack related, we can also take you there. You are surrounded by stroke, heart attack and trauma centers. So you're in a very good position if you are something needing ambulance. I will be here at the end for questions. Thank you for your time and counsel for all yours.
Next we have on the agenda tonight is for economic development, Mr. Marty Peter.
I want to run through a number of things. I'm always trying to bring some slides so you at least get some pictures of what's happening, but especially we're gonna hone in on one. Because as Councilmember Johnson had asked, we're really gonna look at all the permits that have been issued in this year in District Six. So we'll hone in on that. But before we do, want to make sure and point out, the last time we met with you guys, we had told you about what was coming with the old Airhawk Stadium. And certainly it went away and we were pleased to see, we shared with you several, I guess that was April twenty twenty-two, that we could foresee had worked with an agreement and we're gonna see a conversion of that to the first major league cricket stadium in all the country. And fortunately it got completed. This is what it looks like now. And back in July, we saw the very first match take place, a series of tournaments that ended up with the championship here. And thrilled to see the Texas Super Kings, our franchise, be based here in Grand Prairie, Texas. What's even more exciting is because of this stadium being completed, the International Cricket Council has already designated us to be ones to host some of the international matches for the twenty twenty-four T twenty, the shorter version, World Cup. So coming up next June, we're gonna see some international teams and their fans coming to Grand Prairie, Texas to experience what's gonna be the very first International Cricket Council World Cup in North America. So we're looking forward to seeing that. The mayor's already told you a little bit about what's been going on, but we'll just show you a few pictures, certainly with the Andretti indoor party. We put out an ad, an association of our marketing efforts last fall, when it first became public or last, I guess, last January, showing it as well as the Bass Pro at World World. We're still thrilled to see that go vertical. And then as well, he mentioned the big shots golf. It's owned by the company that used to always, they've changed their name, but they used to be known as Club Corp of America. They own golf courses all across the country. They're very well skilled. This will be their showcase, their prototype, that they'll take people that they're trying to bring in to build others. When they fly into Dallas at their headquarters, they'll see it. You may not be able to see this map, but we wanted, we asked our GIS coordinators to give us a picture of what permitting was like. And I can give you news, I'm gonna refer to a few of these, but there's actually more permitting that's been done in District Six from what we can tell in just any other district in the city. They're primarily residential permits, to give you an idea. A thousand and eighty-four residential permits from the start of the year with everything from plumbing to tankless water heaters, gas heaters, fencing, roof, re-roofing, shingle repair, HVAC changeout, solar panel installation, swim spas, irrigation and sprinklers. You guys have been investing and reinvesting in your own homes. And so that's, that's been phenomenal to see and will add certainly greater value to yourselves and the city. There's only been those sixty-four commercial permits, which don't seem like a lot, but the highlighted ones you may have seen on your way in today, two major ones, the two new retail strips right at the intersection with Lake, Lake Ridge on the way in at seventy-five oh one and seventy-five thirty-five. You may have been by lately the Lynn Creek Marina and seen that there's actually been two docks that have been replaced. The total about two point three million. There's also Voters World, which they just came to city staff a few weeks ago. They're wanting to do even more to fix up what they're doing. To fix up what they're doing there adjacent to the marina, there's been uh, if we're talking dollar amounts, there's a three million dollar uh, church that's been approved, but is on hold. At seventeen seventy-five West Garden. And and then as well, uh, out next to three sixty, almost to two eighty-seven, a twenty-eight million dollar International Leadership Academy K through eight school. Uh, that's been planned, so that gives you an idea that if you can see the red line, that's primarily all residential, at that point it was eight eighty-nine, we towed it back up, it's a little bit more. Uh, and then the building commercial, primarily a lot of other things, and I'll be glad to share this with you if you want, and you want to see it. Uh, and you can see it, it's all going quite good activity. One thing we do also want to tell you about is some action that council took. Uh, first our tax increment reinvestment zone number three, board of directors. Uh, and then later approved by council to take a look at expanding it, to take into account what the city has been planning for, for a number of years. Uh, you you've heard uh, Chief Fite mentioned that we're a very long city and we do extend our extraterritorial jurisdiction, goes all the way down. To Venus into Johnson County, if you can imagine that, well, what uh, the the study that hey, we had done a couple of years ago, it dealt with. This South Study Area that you see reflected there in beige at the bottom. And there were some guiding principles, really, the council was committed to it being high quality. And being done in concert with our neighboring cities, so that we created a special place that not only added value, but was the type of development. That uh, citizens would want to see, preserve and protect natural assets, establish scenic gateways, encourage uh, alternative high quality housing. Focus on destination oriented development, multi-generational assets designed with character, preserve commercial viability and attract and retain targeted industries. This is the original terrace number three, what was created for the Estes Peninsula. In twenty nineteen, the council took action, uh, again, with the consultant's help and with our our terrace number three board of directors. To kind of add some additional properties, so that we could maximize development beyond just the peninsula. It even took it all the way down to where the uh, the chief had talked about where Station Eleven is gonna be. And that, here in this most recent action, in addition to that area development zone, as we call it, number six, right at the corner, there's also been added. Uh, number eleven, still just to the north of two eighty-seven, we'll show you in a minute what that is, you may have heard about it already. And then nine and ten, ten, we had to separate those two because it's in two different counties. We're already in three counties, we'll go into our fourth whenever the council decides to annex into Johnson County. Uh, the goals, you can't see all this, but it was for number nine and number ten. Go back today and see nine and ten, was for Prairie Ridge with private guilty advisors, almost six thousand acres. And we're continuing to negotiate with them on what that could be, and I'll show you in a minute what what it's gonna be, and then. Lakesong, something that's been announced here just recently by uh, Huffines Communities. Uh, a large project to the north there, within our existing ETJ or extraterritorial jurisdiction. Uh, as that is annexed in, the agreement is all put in place, there'll be a a large mixed use development, they call Lakesong. And then what Prairie Ridge, until it's officially named in that area. Uh, encompasses is not only a mix of uses, but also some industrial next to two eighty-seven, that can bring, bring great property values. To ensure that there's funding for the best kind of development in all the other areas, so. Uh, I've got a piece, you may have picked it up on your way in, that I left. Uh, as you came in, that talks about what's going on throughout the city. When we get to questions, we'll be glad to come back and uh, and respond to any that you've got, and certainly it's it's a pleasure getting to serve you and to serve the city of Grand Prairie. Thank you.
Mayor Portman, John Lopez, he's sitting back, thank you for coming tonight. All right, uh, Noreen is here, public works, thank you.
Hi, Yuri Calas, I'm the director of Engineering Utilities, and I'm just gonna highlight a couple of projects that's going on down here in District Six. So this first one is that Heritage Pump Station and Ground Storage Stain. The physical construction of it is is done, but we are still doing some um, operational testing before we open it up. We're expected to be up early in winter, December at the latest. The great things about this is you'll see an increase in your water pressure immediately from this. It um, it will also allow the city to grow, as you saw from the other presentations, how much is coming down south. So this will help pump the water from Midlothian's water supply that we buy wholesale. And make sure that we can supply water to all the growth that's come down here. Um, it's kind of some little fun facts, you know, it has the capacity go up to six million gallons a day. Which is equivalent to ninety-six million cups of water per day, is how much it has a capacity at a month. Uh, and the pump station will have, they'll have two, two hundred horsepower pumps and two one hundred horsepower pumps. It just gives us some variety as we grow, to make sure that, you know, we're not having too much, like you're not, we're not gonna open up all of it all at once as growth comes. So the other project that is coming in is um, Davis Road New Alignment, it's a three-phase project. The first phase actually started at the end of September, um, they got their notice to proceed, they're starting the groundbreaking. That's the orange line, uh, that's gonna be widened to four lanes with median sidewalk. And the second phase, which is yellow, which will connect, that's kind of that old uh, Davis Road right now, that's where the fire station will be, it's along that yellow line. Um, that is under design right now, um, and that expects to go into construction in twenty twenty-six. And then that blue line is a future phase, we don't have time in on that, it's gonna be how, whenever development comes. Um, so that's what's going on down in this area for construction. And then I have Cora, who is our customer service utility manager, she's gonna talk about the new water rates that came into effect October first.
Good evening. You probably wonder, how do we determine our rates every year? What we do each year is we actually hire a consultant who will help us determine.
Can you speak up some please?
Sorry, is that better? All right, each year we hire a consultant who helps us determine what our water rates need to be. And so this year we did that, and they were able to come back and help us with some new changes. Historically, we've only had um, a few events. Historically, in nineteen ninety-six, we first entered our tiered rates. This was the first year since then that we added two additional tiered rates. There's a plus to that, because what we have done is we were able to decrease one of the rates that has been higher to a lower rate, which is actually fifty percent of our customer base. If you look at the next slide. This is what our current rates are, and then what they were last year, just so that you can have a quick snapshot. But our next slide will show you a uh, comparison from year to year. So our new tiered rates, we have our first tiered rate, which is we think of as our uh, lifeline rate, if you will. People who use three thousand gallons of water total, then they get charged twelve cents for their water usage plus our base charges. You will see that that, with the new rate changes, that bill will go up two dollars and fourteen cents. For ten thousand gallons of water, it's actually decreased to a dollar ten. That's because that's the rate that had the decrease, fifty percent of our customers actually fall into that category. And then we have, just as an example, twenty thousand gallons of water and then thirty thousand gallons of water, and then you can see the increases there. We went from three tiers to five tiers, and that's what you see here. Um, that concludes what I have, and I'll take questions at the end.
Uh, Dr. Redburn is gonna talk about garbage recycling collection. And I'm sure you're aware that it's changed, I've noticed in my neighborhood, some folks can put trash out. We don't have the wrong day, so hopefully this is gonna carry us a course.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I think uh, this group here, you should be Monday, Thursday collection, correct?
Yes.
And you're still Monday, Thursday collection? You're putting your stuff out on the wrong day, I'm confused, but I'll be happy to clear it up. You're Monday, Thursday? Oh, God. Uh, and recycling is on Wednesday, so that should be the only thing that changed. Um, the good news about all this is the thing that I came here to talk about tonight, please don't get upset about that, it's real hard to read. But everyone should have a handout, if you don't, you have it in the back of the room. The long and short of it is, um, you're going to, if you have a holiday, this group has holiday six times out of six. Coming up in the next year, between now and next October thirty-first. But you're going to still have two collection days per week on the holiday week. And the way that is accomplished, if you look, everybody looks at your handout if you have it, on November, coming right up. There's that Thursday holiday, Thanksgiving, you'll put your trash out the next day. So just slide a day, and the folks that were Friday are gonna slide a day, so they'll put theirs out on Saturday. And then if you look at Christmas, that's on a Monday. So you put your trash out the next day, all other services will slide by day. That's it, so you'll, everybody will get their two days, you don't have to wait until. Next time to put that, to put your trash out. I'm available for questions.
The, now, I was unaware that we have new transportation director, since recently, so. Congratulations, I've noticed at the council meetings and things, I'm just, I don't know. But thank you, congratulations on the promotion.
Thank you, sir.
And uh, for, just, Carl?
Carol.
Carol is here to talk about transportation issues, and she's leaving the best one for last.
Okay.
No, I'm just saying fifty dollar five.
Okay, so District Six, let's talk about roadway projects that we've completed at one twenty-three. Never been accused of being quiet, I'm shocked. Okay, so uh, some of the sales tax projects we've worked on this year, of course, is Westchester subdivision and Trailways subdivision. And we've got into some of the Lake Ridge, but I want you to know, Lake Ridge next year, the panel replacements, we will continue with that until twenty-four. Um, wanted to know status of the I twenty-three drugs, they are complete. Uh, however, we noted a bonding issue, the first time it rained on main lanes, you guys probably noticed as well. Brought that to their attention, we have got tech staff working on a solution going forward, that will be a separate state project, but we are keeping tabs on that as it goes. Uh, they will have to come back and address that issue. Um, Camp Wisdom, there's a few possibles here, so I'll bring you all the ones I've thought. Uh, the intersection Camp Wisdom and Lake Swanson's Hawk, it is currently always stopped in priority before a signal goes in. That signal is on the way, we have uh, various projects that are waiting materials, and this one should be coming in construction by early summer. Uh, twenty-four. Also, uh, the roadway construction that began on July twenty twenty. In the east side of town is now complete, as of this past summer, we had a ribbon cutting on September the twelfth. This was a joint project, uh, Dallas County kind of headed, we have City of Dallas and City of Grand Prairie, and we had everybody there for the ribbon cutting of it very well. Um, prior to the project and since the project, there's been this issue with the parking and fishing going on on the side of roads, maybe you were, so maybe not. Um, we had new parking stop and standing signs out there. Earlier this week, we added the towing plots to it, and Police Department has started enforcing that as of yesterday. And uh, we have to change those behaviors as soon, as soon as this work gets out, heads on. The end, let's talk about the Grand Prairie. Uh, in District Six is pretty much the same as citywide, we've got uh, ridership growing every month. And the higher disruption is now contributing to hospitals and colleges, so there's been additional stops added for hospitals and colleges. And they've also extended service times, uh, more weekend times and later in the evening. I brought some of the road shares with me, they're on the table, you guys may have already picked them up, hot prices just got them today. So they have the extended times, the additional days, they have uh, the the prices to the locations, to some of the colleges and hospitals that have become. Part of our, and expanding ridership. And I would encourage you to use the app for the easiest way to ask for rides, to to find our rides for uh, for me. And the last one they asked us to talk about here is Day Myers. So then it's the proportion is about to start, I say about to start, it's actually already kicked off. It is primarily a man's project, however. Um, Grand Prairie's, we're primarily working on the sidewalks, especially along the east side, we have a lot of Grand Prairie residents and students that are walking to that school. And so the sidewalk um, is the most concern to us, and we are doing the portion of this project. But what I wanted to get out, and you may, some of you may have picked it up, I didn't bring near as many as there are people, but this one was on the table. And this is a forward facing uh, project description, it's on Mansfield, whatever it says, you gotta go see Mansfield. But I did ask them, this is a public facing and the contact information for the uh, the city's foreign contact project managers on there, they've got Shimeria and his contact info on there. You can always go through us, but this one should be updated throughout the project to keep you up to date on what traffic control plans are going on, what lanes might be closed. What facing and exactly where we are in the project. And I believe that's it.
Uh, the last speakers. From Parks and Recreation, uh, Mr. Ray Serta.
Thank you, Captain. Ray Serta, Parks Arts and Recreation Director. Uh, today I'm gonna talk to you about some of our uh, things that we're doing in District Six. First one, get away from it. The first one that we're gonna be doing is Freedom Park, uh, we're putting in an N F C, which is National Fitness Campaign. It's a fitness court, it's designed to provide a full body workout, including walk, fours, squats, push, lunges, pulls. Uh, these are stationary uh, exercise equipment, so if you're out there walking on a trail and you wanna do some exercises. Uh, we're gonna have these courts put out there. And we're actually having six courts put out there, uh, at different districts. And also, one component that we're really proud of is we're adding a uh, an art program. And what we're doing is we're soliciting all the students in Grand Prairie, who are artists, to come in and design. Some of these uh, designs that we have, as you can tell, uh, some of our artist drawings. And they'll be eligible for a five thousand dollar grant fund that the National Fitness Campaign is putting in. So if you know any students uh, in the high school or even junior high levels. That are interested in in doing some artist work, please uh, it's on our website, uh, please let them know about that. Uh, because we're really trying to push this. The next thing is, I know uh, Captain Johnson talked about this, is the Lake Ridge Community Center. Uh, we we've had two input meetings, we had one this past Monday. Uh, we do have a Q R code that's up there on the screen, so we haven't filled out the survey. And now's a good time to take a picture of that Q R code, and uh, please, we're asking for input, and please fill out that survey. One program that we're, I'm gonna talk about a little bit about, is called Forest of Beer, that's on October, uh, I'm sorry, October fourteenth and the twenty-first. And that that's at Lloyd Park, which is at thirty-four oh one Rackland Road, it's twenty dollars per vehicle. And what is pretty neat about this is, uh, all the campsites are are decorating their campsites. And so you just pay and you go through the uh, the campsites, and uh, they actually give out candy. And uh, you can actually uh, check it out, and uh, it's almost kind of like a haunted drill type deal, and you stay in your vehicle. And so that's on October fourteenth and the twenty-first. Uh, there are long lines, so uh, if you plan on coming, please get there early. Next thing I want to talk to you about is a program called Party Lights. Uh, this is at M three. So this year, we're starting, uh, Thanksgiving Day, as we always do, it's November twenty-third. And uh, ends on New Year's Eve, all the way to December thirty-first. Uh, gates open at six P M, and our closing time depends on the traffic. Uh, make sure you get there early, because as y'all know, uh, there's a lot of traffic on on that night. This year, we're doing a drive-through holiday light experience, there's over four million, four million lights. Set along a two-mile path with hundreds of light displays and shapes of all kinds, and you can see some pictures there from previous years. Also having the Holiday Village, it's a light, light walk-through forest. Uh, where I was gonna have a carnival ride, photos of Santa, concessions, vendors and photo opportunities. This year's pricing for uh, if you're not a Grand Prairie resident, it is fifty dollars a car, a hundred and fifty dollars for limos. If you're going for the fast track, it's a hundred and forty-nine, but this year, council, get away from the next one. Slide. This year, council voted on to have for the twenty, twenty- This year, council voted on to have for the 23 Grand Prairie residents, it's going to be $35 for, $35 down for general admission from November 27th through December 1st, and then, uh, after that, it's a $10 off general admission off the $50, so it's actually going to be for Grand Prairie residents, it's $40. It's $40. And that's redeemable at any night during that entire, entire event, and you can pick up that coupon at any of the rec centers, libraries, uh, at any of the city facilities. And then, of course, you can contact us with, uh, at grandperrylights.org, on Facebook, X, and, uh, at Prairie Lights. And I'll be more than happy to take any comments and questions afterwards. Thank you so much.
Hey, everybody, my name is Chip Navy, and I'm the Downtown Manager for the city. Councilman for Johnson asked me to come out and tell you about some of the things that are going down, going on in your downtown. Uh, I know it seems like it's a long way from here, but downtown Grand Prairie is your downtown too, it's not just for the folks on the north side of town. The first thing that I want to talk about is our Market on the Move program. This is new for us this year for our farmers' market. We actually started this program off in District Six back in the spring at, uh, Lake Creek Park. That was our first Market on the Move. This is an initiative to bring the market to different districts in the city. We do it on Sunday each month. This month, we're actually doing two. We did skip, uh, August because it's quite warm, so our first Market on the Move this month is going to be at Michael's Park, which is about as far from here as you can get in the City of Grand Prairie. That's going to be this coming Sunday from 10 to 2:00. But the next one, the following Sunday on October 22nd, is going to actually be at the Rupi Jackson Center, which brings you back to this side of town a little bit for you guys, so please come out and visit this at Market on the Move, you can go on either of these Sundays, or your Grand Prairie Farmers Market is open every Saturday from 8:00 to noon in downtown. The next thing that I want to talk about is our De Nellis Duercos, uh, event that's coming up on October 28th. It's from 6:00 P. M. to 9:00 P. M., right in front of your City Hall. It's an amazing event, it's a very cultural event, uh, for all people, it's not specific to any one culture. We do have a butterfly fly release, there will be entertainment that night, there will be Katrina's, we'll have vendors out there that you can purchase food, we'll be showing the movie Coco on a big screen outside. It's a great event, we had about 2,200 people come last year, and we're looking to increase that number this year, so please give it a try, come out and see us at De Nellis Duercos. Councilmember Lopez, who's in the back of the room, is one of our committee members on that, and he kind of helped spearhead the beginning of that for us, so thank you very much. The next thing that I want to tell you guys about is our tree lighting ceremony, it will be on December the 1st. It starts at 6:00 P. M. in front of City Hall, the big, uh, community Christmas tree is put out in front, and that's also the night that we will be opening our ice rink. It's a great event, uh, that also will coincide with a, uh, Christmas on the Prairie event, it's going to be brought to us from the Chamber of Commerce, so there will be vendors out there that evening, uh, selling Christmas gifts and things of that nature. We'll also have food, vendors out there for that. And then the ice rink that opens on December the 1st will run through the 26th. Now, this is real ice outside in the state of Texas in the middle of Christmas season, so if you did not get a chance to come out last year, please come downtown to the ice rink. It's free, 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 no cost at all to come skate on real ice outside in downtown Grand Prairie, so I'd love to see you guys come out there. I know that it's difficult sometimes to get the word out and for you guys to know what's going on. I've heard from Councilmembers Lopez and Councilmember Johnson that a lot of times, and Councilmember Asiano actually, that the word is not getting out here for what's happening in your downtown. So what we've done on the next screen is I've got two Q R codes up here, the best way to get information about downtown, we're going to come to these things and we're going to try and spread the information to you, but we have Facebook and Instagram both up here. I've also got this printed-on piece of paper that I'm going to sit three of them around the room, so please come up and link in and follow us on Facebook and Instagram. Everything that I've just talked about and everything else that we're doing in downtown is on both of those social medias. It's very easy to follow us, and you'll get all the information, and I'll be around for questions afterwards. Thanks a lot, y'all.
Bessie Adams, who just came into the, to the building, thank you for coming, Bessie. Nothing else, we're going to sit there, I guess this concludes the meeting tonight. Appreciate you guys coming out, I'm just joking. So, we're going to open it up for Q and A's, there's a mic, there's a mic here, so we're handing the microphone, so, uh, we also work live on Facebook, no. Two questions, so I'm going to take some questions from the audience, then I'm going to take some questions from people that's at home watching the class.
Hi, Eric. I'm Erica Carlson. On this growth, there's some really exciting stuff, I don't want to say there isn't, but I have to ask the city what steps are being taken to make sure there's adequate resources to keep the air conditioning, the lights on, to make sure we have enough water to drink, water our lawns, et cetera, et cetera. Awful lot of conservation that's gone on these last three years, and we're just continuing to grow.
That's an excellent question. Anybody from the staff like to raise your hand, Noreen? See, I want to know would be how we maintain the infrastructure growth along with the growth of the city, to ensure we have water.
Keep the lights on, air conditioning on, provide enough water for everybody, because that's not happening right now.
So on the water issue, you know, we do have-
The microphone, please.
So with farms, the water, you know, we do have capital projects that were put by council that are, we're starting to grow our construction and replace existing infrastructure. Um, we also just purchased 1 million extra gallons from the City of Dallas, that's one of our cities that we buy water from, so we have that extra capacity that will be here next year. We're in the middle of, well, we just started, we're in the middle of redoing our contingency plan, so we're going to kind of come together, so we're not going to this whole lake ever go to stage two again, we're going to start that, we're kind of going to have a nail base. That it is in the plan with the growth, like I said, that pump station, that's like you were saying, right now, we just have to drive, go into that area, that Greenway Trails, that Heritage, it's just a direct line, so with the pump station and the ground storage thing, it'll hold more capacity, so there's, I think, two Olympic-sized pools that I can hold in that storage, and that will make sure that we're always maintaining the pressure, maintaining the need that everyone has. Uh, north, we have the Robinson tank, we have a brick bed by the epic, that's a 2 million gallon tank that's going out, and it's going to be completed in September of next year. We also are reviewing another pump station to the north, all that is going to pump water from Dallas, like I said, that's our largest, um, uh, city that we buy water from, and when all the structures in, we'll be able to route the water from the city as needed from the sources. So we are working on power, so it's hard.
I, I understand that the city doesn't provide power, but regardless, there's been, uh, in the last three years, I've been, you know, 30 degrees in my house, we're in a polar vortex, but, um, 56 degrees last, uh, December because of the lack of natural gas on a 10 degree day, um, air conditioning, we're getting asked every day to turn it up, turn it up, turn it up. Logically, most people keep their thermostat at the maximum of what they can actually afford to pay for, so they really don't want to turn it up anymore than that. So, I know the city doesn't provide power, but we keep growing knowing that there is not enough, and I, I just wonder why we're not addressing that.
Well, I'm going to give the city manager and ask that, hopefully, my next town hall meeting, we can have Encore Atmos out here, so they can, you can ask them those same questions, because I hear it all the time down, I call it south of the bridge, Peninsula and Miralaga, south of the bridge. You guys have had power outages, gas, uh, pressure issues, where, where this past, this year, when it got cold, the Atmos, they had tankers there to, to put pressure in there in case it got low, because that's what we've been on, on them about. The mayor's gone down with, uh, State Representative Chris Turner to talk to the state about what's going on, so it's an issue that we're very concerned with, and we can only move as fast as they're able to move, but I have no issues with bringing them back here at my next town hall meeting, so they can answer those questions for you, because they're very, that's, you're leading to something I'm going to talk about later, but I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point, but you're saying they only move so fast, but we're moving faster than they are, that's the problem.
They're, they're going to move along with us in step, because you can't build a home if there's no power there, or there's no electricity, so they're going to move, but to address the issue where there's a shortage, I believe, somewhere, they have where to work, in my understanding, this year, we adjusting the power lines and grids to ensure that they don't have any problems, but we just have to wait and see if it, what happens. This year, uh, I live in Westchester, I only have one power outage this year, that's why. I don't know what you guys have down here, but my power-
You know, I'm up there.
Yeah. If my power goes out, I'm always looking to see where the power is out within District Six, and then I look at around the city, so, because if it's out in my home, sure, it might be out south of the bridge, I must say, everything's south of the bridge, as referred to that. If we answer your question to the best that we could.
I think the best we can.
Yeah.
But again, I think we're outpacing them, I think we are going faster than they are.
Okay.
It just seems a little irresponsible, that's all.
Okay, we're, I'll make sure-
You might be able to plug a power line into a new permanent complex, but that does not mean there's enough power being generated for everybody.
We agree, so at the next council meeting, uh, I'll, I'll bring this issue up, staff is already here, city manager knows about it, so they have answers for us for the next meeting.
I know, I always point, honestly, we're, just on, on our mentions, is that we would likely have a common solutions and a plan versus just, you know, taking our, our questions. Last Wednesday in Greenway Trail, the, the outages behind the storm were very random, and people were out for the better part of the day without any feedback.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm hoping everyone's aware of the app, if you go to Encore app, there's a power outage, so you can report your power outage. Uh, that's what I do personally, if power goes out, I go and look to see if someone's already reported. I know in my neighborhood, if power's out on my side of the street, it's on across the street. If it's off over there, it's on over here, can't figure that out myself, why the power operates that way. So, if you go to the Encore app, you can see where it's at, uh, and they give you an estimated time of repair. It is very frustrating to me, no difference to you, if the estimated repair is going to be 2:00 P. M., 1/3 of your check is 8:00 P. M., and then 7:30 is the next day. Of course, I'm calling staff, where we at, because we have a representative, that's why I know we can bring someone out here, and I agree, they shouldn't just come and give us lip service, they should come, just like staff came prepared with some things I wanted to talk to, to you guys about, they come prepared with the issues they've had in the past, and how they're going to address them moving forward. Are you, so it's, it's question, you want, everyone gets one question, that's it.
Thank you, Eric, and to all the other city councilmen, mayor, appreciate your time tonight. My name is Bernard, I live in the Greenway Trails neighborhood, uh, I had two questions, but I guess I've consolidated down to just one.
Junction, junction, what's your function?
So, uh, in the Greenway Trails neighborhood, uh, obviously, so, we already heard tonight, they're planning on building the I O T, it's going to bring thousands of students in to that neighborhood on a daily basis during school year. We have the Henley Apartments being built at the entrance as well, it's going to bring another, I think, 600 or so units to that area, and then we also have another apartment in Town Hall Complex being built, uh, at the corner of, uh, 360 to 87. Now, kind of along the lines of, uh, what this young lady said a moment ago, uh, the infrastructure, what are the plans, I think this might be a question for, I believe her name is Carol, in terms of the roads, because, uh, for us in Greenway Trails, we really only have one way in, one way out, uh, so to speak, to, uh, we have a back, the back street to get out, uh, but Heritage, uh, you know, I believe there's some plans for that to be expanded, potentially or connected, um, and I think that that's going to create a, uh, I, I just hope that it doesn't create a huge issue for us as residents in that neighborhood where, you know, we're bombarded with cars and traffic, and there's no light at the end of that street that, you know, connects to the service driver 360, so what's the, what is the plan?
I got your question, I'll follow on.
Yes, sir.
I'm all for streetlights, so we need a streetlight, uh, that's for the roads, specifically, which roads we're going to build to open up the congestion, I'm not aware of Carol and answered that, but the long-term planning down there, there are roads on the map to be built and constructed along with the new construction that's going down here, so it's not that, you're going to talk about it? Okay, well, Carol Walter's going to talk, so, uh, come on in.
We do have some things planned down there, of course, we've got the thoroughfare plan, and we've got things we've had in plan a long time, and these developments are kind of developing around it, we've got to move forward. Uh, one of the things that Noreen had shown was the new alignment of Davis, we've got a lot of things going with Tech Dot as well, um, for Six specifically, the front end roads and 287, things like that, that you guys are referencing over at Greenway. We have to work in tandem with Tech Dot as well to get some of these things up and going, and it has to be, um, we're dealing with front end roads now that don't have main lanes over there, and, uh, some of the areas I'm not yet familiar with as much as Walter would be, but, uh, the whole area, we are looking at it as a whole, it is on the thoroughfare plan, and these projects are coming up in our capo the next couple of years, they're in design, they're in progress, and as the developers come along, uh, we also require them to build some of these as well.
Thank you, Carol. I'm just like you when they're, Rupan Roads, building a new street, I wish I was back or be witches, twirling my nose, and it's done, but we have to wait, it's, you have to be very patient for them to finish, just like Day My Road, I know that's going to be a big issue, although she's mentioned it's a Mansfield project, but it borders right on Grand Prairie, and, uh, I'm sure I'll get a lot of phone calls about what's going on, so we're trying to get ahead of that with our communications to ensure, hey, where to go, who to talk to, or just call us, we'll get you to answer. Day My Road is going to be a long project, just trying to get completed, because they're doing a lot over there. It's needed, everyone agreed, has agreed, who's come to me, it's needed, but no one will like to go through the growing pains at this point, but we got to go through the growing pains. Hold on for a second, I'm going to take a question off, yeah, off the line.
Okay, so, the first one I have is, this is, uh, an economic development question. Is there any possibility for Amicusina, Papasitos, or Papados along the 160?
Sounds very good.
At present, no, we do communicate with all of those groups, but they're presently owned, we're running out of space, you heard the mayor share earlier, the last space at Epic Central is already dedicated to a restaurant that will become public, uh, in the coming months. We have continued to stay in contact with Amicusina, they have been reluctant to come to our city, but we keep knocking on their door because we made it clear we'd like to see it. We've talked to the Papas group, and we continue to visit with them, as well as the Landry's group, the people, uh, that own several franchises, so we certainly appreciate you guys always telling us what you want, continue to do that, as our council members relay, when they hear it, we put it on the list. K Brown, Patrick, my business manager for Retail Attraction and I, continue to go and knock on the door and ask these individuals to consider coming.
Thank you, Marty. Marty, I seen him a long ago, uh, son of a butcher, have you guys ever heard of him?
Yes, they're great.
Yes. See, we're trying to get them here, it's, they have to make the final decision. Uh, I've heard down here, we won't wipe paper off restaurants, we're trying to get that, but the majority of the restaurants are saying they want a lunch crowd, and we said, a lot of folks working at home, they're watching the news like I am, uh, I have to go back into the office still in January, bummer, but, you know, I have to go back into the office, I've been working at home for four years, now returned to the office, so they waited it out, they were right about making that decision, but it's not like we're not trying to find quality different restaurants. The council wants, we don't, we prefer not to have any chain restaurants coming through the road. We want different, unique, one-of-a-kind, one-offs or two-offs, and that's about it. All right, next question from the audience, please. Thank you, Kevin, no one.
Welcome. Um, like, my question has to do with the Day Bar construction over here. As you know, uh, during the last P I D meeting, the engineer for Mansfield came down and he gave this glorious story about expanding roads and, and the drainage and so on and so forth. Well, as a member of the P I D board, we're concerned about runoff of those, of that water going into our ponds, so my question is basically this, if something goes high right on us and notes, and that construction affects our ponds, is this- Is the city of Grand Prairie and the city of Mansfield going to correct the problem and not pass the bill on to the residents of the?
Great question there. I mean, that's a really good question as far as our number of effort in this project. I'm gonna speak for the city. The city can come correct me, Walter, Bill, Carol, anyone. Yes, we are. We're gonna, I would prefer the city continue to watch the project that's being developed because, uh, Mayor Portina Lopez and I have made known to them that we're concerned to ensure it's done right, there are any complaints where to go. So the staff is going to continue to watch the process go on. So if you see something, like I've always said, you see something, say something. It, it sounds a little cliché, but it's true. We're, you're our eyes and ears into the community about what's affecting you. And, and majority have, have known, if you reached out to me, you got the response right back within a day or two. So I'm here to respond to whatever concerns you may have. So Walter, yours now?
Yeah, I wanna, just, just for one second, if you, uh, drainage of the project, correct? That, that was kind of the concentration of your concern?
Well, we have, we have a historical problem here with runoff ponds affecting the homeowners that surround them. So also what's our understanding of being able to suit the score of the pond is that if they weren't doing, again, they wouldn't do them the same way. With this being part of the whole Grand Prairie watershed system, we just want to make sure that this construction, uh, this is gonna increase the, the runoff, it's gonna increase the water value, volume, and it's going to, they simply going to direct our pond. Now, if that's the case, my question is very simple, yes or no? If that runoff is just calculated again and affects that pond or any other pond within the pit, is the city of Grand Prairie and the city of Mansfield going to feed that cost to bill it so that people that are residents here in the pit don't have to pay for it? Because we're paying a million dollars a month, a year maintaining these ponds.
Hey, councilor, let me answer your question. One, one thing.
Since it's gonna look at it, he told us with the eyes and ears and letting know when, when the shit is, well, what we're gonna know is when that happens, are you gonna clean it?
And councilor actually addressed that, but what I wanted to address is the part on the construction. Cause that's, that's what you're asking, correct? With, with any construction project, when you have a construction project, the contractor has to do this part of stormwater pollution. It's called SWIP. You may have heard of that. So any, any type of runoff that happens during the construction, that's actually the responsibility of the contractor to do it. Through the, uh, city of Mansfield, because they'll be working for the city of Mansfield. So any runoff that happens through there is, is counted through that SWIP. So that, so it is related directly to the, uh, construction. That is what comes.
So has that been reviewed and approved to say that?
That, that would actually.
Ponds can handle that runoff?
I'm sure it has been, and that is actually.
I asked you, has it been done? Can you tell me?
That's true, because, sir, let me ask you a question, okay? This is a Mansfield project. They did come here to speak at the P I D meeting. Hold on, Kevin. They did come and speak at the P I D meeting. That's why I'm still trying to bring this issue up because there's any concerns. What I've heard Walter state is that if there is a problem, the P I D bring it to the city. The project has been already vetted through Mansfield. The city will go to Mansfield and tell them, you have a problem to correct. That's what I just heard. What about you, Kevin?
Well, I think it goes back down to, I heard this question here, about infrastructure not being able to maintain that.
Okay, let's, let's stick, we're not gonna go from.
So, so what I'm saying is that he says this SWIP, uh, development, this program has been, has been done.
Yes.
So since the water is going into Grand Prairie, has someone reviewed this SWIP plan to make sure that it works?
I would ask the city manager to have someone to review that and get back with you on that. And you can, if you don't mind, take that information to the P I D. At your next P I D meeting and let them know the results from that. That way they can get out because I have no other form.
I am the P I D.
I know, but you're not the only P I D. There are P I D members and people come to the P I D meeting, just like here, they might come to the P I D meeting. So if you can put that information out, or I can come back to the P I D meeting if you ask, if, if you invite me, I can get the same information back out again. So are we able to move on from your question or are there still some more you'd like to have answered?
Uh, what will be later?
Okay. Next question, please.
Hello, Councilman Johnson. Hello, Councilman Lopez. Long time no see. So hello, everyone. My name is Sarah. Born and raised in Grand Prairie, love Grand Prairie, from north to south. I am of Grand Prairie, Grand Prairie. However, as you know, I am not in favor of the Lake Bridge Community Center. That is correct. So what I heard on Monday, and correct me if I'm wrong, well, he and you on the way, Councilman? It's a foregone conclusion is what Mayor Romans had said, is that, you know, basically we, the citizens didn't get a vote. We didn't get a say. It's just, it's going. So now we want to know what you want in it. When Marilago Salone, I can't speak for Grand Peninsula, but Marilago Salone already has a lot of amenities, with soccer fields. We're building more, we have pools, we have trails. I don't feel like a community center is warranted at that location. There was another council member who represents another part of Grand Prairie that doesn't have a community center. Um, and he was there to get, to kind of see what we were looking to do. And I said, please, take ours. We don't need it. We don't want it. Take it, put it over by Westchester, put it over by the Ruthie Jackson Center. Hell, put it on the other side of the lake for all I care. That corner is already so congested. And yes, we're having infrastructure problems. Yes, we're having P I D problems and pond problems. We don't need to add another problem. So what can I do to make sure it doesn't go there? And then also, I think I might have misspoken to you gentlemen on Monday, and I want to own that. Chief, we did not have fifteen carp lifts. It was the smash and grabs. It was the people going into unlocked cars. Yes, we did have the one truck that was stolen that was recovered in another city. So it was those smash and grabs that were all over next door, which I know y'all can't see, but I did let them know. My husband and I were concerned about the crime increasing because we don't feel like we see the decrease. We just feel like, you know, we review our security cameras and look, there were two young men checking the doors and thank God we locked ours, but not everybody does. So one, I wanted to apologize if I misspoke on Monday about it being the, it was the smash and grabs or the unlocked and then the one vehicle. So yes, I appreciate the drones. Yes, I know we have lots of officers in our neighborhood from Irving, Grand Prairie, Arlington. And I appreciate them parking their cruisers like no one's business. I love that. But I have seen an uptick in my personal belief. And then yes, how can I get rid of that Lake Bridge Community Center so it's not already a congested area would be my one question. And thank you again. I also love the extra, you know, sliding of the trash days. Thank you. I love the water. I love everything about Grand Prairie.
Okay, that's my question. With the conjunctions of the conjunctions. Okay, to answer the question for community center. There's been some, a small minority of residents who don't want it, but overwhelmingly, the majority of people have asked for it. The communication started back in twenty twenty one, after I was elected. I had my first town hall meeting down here. And Junior Zano and myself, when we were running, residents were saying at the time, the things they want. A high emotional store, no more apartments, a community center, because we need somewhere for the kids to go to that's nowhere for them to go. So I'm not gonna advocate for you to have it or not have it. I'm not gonna give you a strategy plan to go out and defeat it. But my whole purpose of the community center is not, I have no, nothing vested in it. My purpose of having is that when the power goes out, in twenty twenty one, when the power was out down here. Where did you go? Some had power generators. My neighbor across the street didn't. I had power through the entire time. What did I do? I ran a long extension car from my home to his home just so they can have power. That was just me. But where did you go? The city is responsible for their citizens that's in the city. I came here in twenty twenty two with Mr. Hills asking Marilago's and Grand Peninsula. Are you willing to spend seventy five thousand dollars for a docking station? To dock here, because when the power goes out down here, is there a generator here in this building? No. The docking station, we have a mobile powering stations that will come down here, dock here. So now the building has heat or A C for you. Marilago's and Grand Peninsula both said, no, we don't want it because, because if, if they're Marilago's residents, only they can come. But you're using a, a city asset to come down here. Now, everyone's now in the same situation where they, they were freezing and they're having a way to stay warm, to get food, but when the bridge is frozen ice over, there's no one crossing the bridge. You're down here by yourself. So the community center would be also considered a heating and warming and cooling station for residents in case they need to go. Or there's potential national disaster. Where, where are people gonna go? Because if there's a national disaster and they bring all the food to Marilago, that's what you say, Grand Peninsula can't come? That's not gonna happen either. The city has to protect their citizens and provide services to them as well. I'm not trying to get a son born. I'm just telling you, that's my perspective. It's gonna happen again. The power's gonna go out. The gas is not gonna come through. It's, it's gonna happen again. So to answer the question, I don't know. You, I'm sure you can figure out which way to go. I know there's about five people that we know have said they don't want their, the recreation center. Now, as far as the congestion on the traffic on Lake Ridge and, and, uh, England Parkway, we've already gone out to the, to, uh, congressional members. Crockett, V C, and Elsie asked for thirty million dollars to increase the lanes on Lake Ridge Parkway from three to four. Because we know there may be potential congestion as well as trying to drive further down south. The bridge is also, the money is also for bikers who want to cross the bridge safely because they're motorists. I don't know who they are. They ride right on the bikers' back tire. They ride on the back tire. It's not safe for them to cross the bridge. So where they do, they stop and turn around. We're trying to make the city open for everyone, for bikers within the city, outside the city as well. So as far as the recreation center, you have until August, I mean, October thirty first, but the conversation started two years ago. Hold on, chief?
And you gotta love, please, he gives a good question right out of the ass, his fan right here, so I'm gonna try my best to recover. So, uh, I appreciate the concern about the, uh, burglary of motor vehicles. So I'm gonna tell you the facts, but then I'm gonna tell you even one is too many, okay? So we in District Six are the lowest number of vehicle burglaries in the last five years, third twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So it's coming down dramatically, but still way too high. So it, it, uh, you had mentioned your ring camera, and I have one too. And, uh, I'm sorry, let me correct one other thing. I only know about what's reported, right? And I'm not so naive to believe that if somebody comes out and their car's been run through. Some people just don't want to have to, maybe they're gonna, they have to work, they don't make a report. Maybe nothing was stolen, so they don't, uh, make a report. So I'm mindful of that, but I have to believe that that was probably true over the last five years. It's not just this year as well, right? So, uh, the data shows a significant downward trend. All that said, I'm not giving you an excuse, man. I, I, if you have one, particularly yours, it's one too many. I will tell you one other quick point. The police officers in Grand Prairie take crime personally. They really do. They enjoy catching criminals. So they spend a lot of time in your neighborhood. If they see cars that are roaming around, they, they have drones in their vehicle. They'll sit back, they'll launch the drone. It's something off a sci-fi show. They'll watch the cars, they'll watch the people. And if they go to help themselves to your property, they're very good. And by the way, you're not gonna outrun a Grand Prairie cop either. I can promise you, these guys are in good shape. So I say all that to say this, if you see something suspicious, the councilman stole a police slogan, see something, say something. Please do, uh, I, as I mentioned earlier, I can't see, the police department is not allowed to see what's happening on next door. So if you're noticing a trend, I'm easy to find. Just Google it. Send me an email. I will, I, I can guarantee you, we'll close patrol, tie it, do whatever it takes. Because regardless of what the numbers say, if you don't feel safe in your home, then we're doing our job well. So we are on it, I promise. Does that answer your question? Okay, great.
This lady right here, if I have. Okay.
Um, to make another good Grand Way Trails, I wanted to ask a quick question. I know you guys put on the retail and all that stuff back on one sixty one. Is there any retail gonna come down that way where we live at?
Yes, that's in the future development. Over the next year or two, we're probably approving all those, uh, projects that's gonna come down there. So it's gonna be a while, so retail.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I don't see one question, but this is very confusing. So, um, you guys gave us the Midlothian P O box, but then it says Grand Prairie on the, uh, henlist that you guys are building. So what is ours? Is it Midlothian or with Grand Prairie?
Bill, where we are, only getting that corrected on the, uh, the zip code. It takes.
You've got to be rolling five, but when you pull up our grid, it's like Grand Prairie and then.
We, we have several areas in the city that have a different mailing address than they have a property deal. Your property address is, I believe, Midlothian. How, your property address is in Grand Prairie, your mailing address is in Midlothian. The reason for that is that the post office that delivers your mail is out of Midlothian. I live right out of this area, a little bit further to the south. My mail comes out of the Cedar Hill Post Office. My five foot Grand Prairie, a mail coming to myself that don't deliver it. But if it says Cedar Hill, it is delivered because it, it coming from the Cedar Hill Post Office. So we have a couple, three or four areas in town where that's occurred. As we grow, then is the time when we'll be able to petition the postal service and the postal master in order to give us a zip code that is strictly Grand Prairie. So for right now, you're probably being in Midlothian until such time as there's enough density for a post office. And we have no control over it. All right, next question.
Just wanted to add that mentioned petitioning the post office. We have actively petitioned. We understand a lot of development that's happening down south. By the way, I'm Rashad Jackson, planning director.
It's on, I can hear you.
Okay. My name's Rashad Jackson. I'm the planning, the development director. Um, so I do zoning and construction. I've worked with the post office. My team has worked with the post office. We understand a lot of developments happening down south, three sixty two eighty seven. Uh, we petitioned the post office to get them to update their zip codes. Right now, the zip codes, as Mr. Hills has noted, if you have a Midlothian zip code, but you're in Grand Prairie, they disregard the fact that you're in Grand Prairie. Once they find out that you're in a Midlothian zip code, they will not deliver it to you, or there's some mishap with that. We asked them to update their, uh, their files in order to include Grand Prairie in that zip code, and they reluctantly done so. Uh, it's gone all the way up to, um, our representatives. We've talked, talked to our representatives. It takes a, I hate to say the term, active God to create a new zip code. It goes to all the way to Washington, D C to create a, a zip code. Our first request was denied. So we're gonna keep chipping away at it, but I just wanted to let you know we are working on it.
Next question.
Do you have my tips? Hello, I just, um, wanted to make a comment about the warming station and creating a community, uh, center just for a warming station. Or, you know, with that as the main focus, I think that there are other ways to do that instead of creating an entire community center again for, you know, residents that may not need that in this area. I, I heard you say that you spoke to people, but I've been here since twenty twenty and I hadn't heard anything about it. So I would just suggest that maybe there's another avenue of communication that goes out to the residents. I could email, I could text messages from Grand Prairie all the time. So maybe that's an additional way to try to engage the community to actually understand what the majority really wants. Um, and I don't even want to speak for the majority, but I would like to have an opportunity to put my input in because I do live here. And, um, just as far as the infrastructure, I think having a warming station, you know, the, instead of the focus being on that, it should be the focus on getting us, you know, gas out here, like we talked about earlier with the infrastructure. Even when we don't have a winter storm like this past winter, we had issues warming our house. You know, as it has already been mentioned. So I think that those kind of things should really be the focus because we shouldn't be out here in the neighborhood and not be able to, you know, heat our. So I think that those kind of things should really be the focus because we shouldn't be out here in the neighborhood and not be able to, you know, heat our house on a regular basis without some kind of natural disaster or.
Yeah, I I agree, but the focus, just to make sure we we are on the same page, the focus is really not for the warming and cooling station. It's a backup to Recreation Center. The Recreation Center that the community asked for, and that's where we had a meeting on Monday night. To ask what you want to put in there because, I mean, we had a meeting before then with the community leaders within the community that was invited to come out. And then we had a meeting on Monday night for the community because then we sent this out to all the residents. Amy's not here, uh to ask you what you want and don't want. As far as trying to communicate more with the District Six residents. Uh I can only use the forms that's provided to me. I don't have your, I don't know your name, I don't have your email address, huh?
We have a great HOA that gives us information quickly and easily. We have our email addresses, I'm sure Grand Peninsula.
You'd like me to send this to Stacy. So Stacy will send it out because it's up to them to to do that, and I can't make them do that.
Well, we can ask that, that would be good.
Yeah, you can ask, give me permission if I send stuff to send out because Greenery Trails always ask me to send stuff, and I send it to them. I've sent stuff to other HOAs, it's never going out. So it's not me is trying to communicate, but I I'm only limited as far as how much I can communicate. Without going to every door, it's just impossible. Thirty some thousand residents down here in District Six, you say fifteen thousand doors. Uh it's not gonna happen. I'm not, I'm I don't think anyone would do that. But that's why I started holding town hall meetings. To talk to the residents, to get people out here so I can see what's going on in the community, so they can hear what's going on with District Six and the city. Before you got in twenty twenty, there were no town hall meetings, that's just a fact. I started hosting so I can get information out, and look how many people are here, thirty some thousand folks in this district.
Again, I heard about it on Nextdoor, so I think that the communication is, that there's.
Just lay it back here, she's been raised in the in the blue. Yeah, uh I agree with Nextdoor. Nextdoor is good, and it's got some.
Hi, um I'm saying I have concerns about the community center. I came to the meetings that you're talking about when you were asking residents what they wanted. I was here. And the residents, uh there was not an overwhelming, yes, we want a community center. It was, do you want a community center? Do you want a dog park? Tell me what you want so that we can build it. That was not a, yes, we want a community center. I spoke to you on the phone and you told me that there was, y'all were talking about putting an outdoor concert venue at this community center.
There's like, uh uh.
That's, we had that conversation.
This is, that's the misconception with, was on Monday, if Amy was here, they put a stage. I said, no, the gymnasium itself, this is the gym. This is the stage. If you wanna have an event for, for a performance show, you're in the gymnasium right there, right? Here's the stage. If you want to do an outdoor event, you can raise the back door here, and you can do it out there, but you're still using the stage, no separate stage to be built.
Okay, but still, having an outdoor event, how are y'all gonna control it? I can hear the band playing over at the stadium, the hospital band. If you have outdoor events where people are playing concerts or music, how are you gonna control the noise? Or the foot and car traffic that are gonna be coming into our neighborhood to park?
Uh noise, we we discussed where we locate the uh, how you put the Recreation Center on the property. We don't wanna facing into the community. There's a whole bunch of trees we're gonna keep up, so we, this is not finalized, these some of our thought processes. Should be facing the trees because it's gonna buffer the noise.
I can hear the hospital band playing at the the stadium from our neighborhood. How is a tree going to buffer the noise?
This is a situation that you don't want to win this conversation. It's a win-win, not lose-lose, meaning no matter.
So lose-lose for our neighborhood.
That's.
Are we gonna come out all of that? It's gonna increase crimes, it's gonna increase mood pollution. No, we need to get rid of this thing. It's not something that we want. We had people there saying, no, we don't want it. No, get rid of it.
Back to the ladies coming earlier. When we knocked on doors, they said they wanted it. They might might not have been here, but when we came in to talk about it.
Now, for seven years, you you have not knocked on my door, you haven't knocked on my door, nobody's knocked on my door, nobody's knocked on her door or their door.
I don't want into specifics about why we didn't knock on your door, because it's political reason why we might might not knock on your door. Or you might have a no solicitation on your door. If there's no solicitation. No, I I didn't say you specifically knocked on doors in general, who, when we knocking on doors in the community. Those are people that we reached out to where we're campaigning. I don't wanna make this a political event, but when you. But when you are knocking on doors, you're gonna target certain neighborhoods and certain people who are likely voters. That's in a city election, not a national election. That's the difference.
We didn't get a vote, it wasn't on the ballot.
We didn't, it's not, it's not, it was not on the ballot. It was at the town hall meetings, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and now twenty twenty three for the discussion. That's where we moved forward.
Then why force it down our throat if we didn't get a choice in it? We did not get a choice as a community, as a city, to vote on it.
But you have a choice here.
That you are ignoring. Mayor Jensen said on Monday, it's a dumb deal, you get no say in it. He said that you know it, you're the word of everybody, it's not on our door, that's bull.
You may, I never told you that. You said Mayor Jensen. That's what I said, let's make that clear. Who told you it was over and down? I've never said, just like when your wife asks questions. I'm not gonna tell you what to do or not to do. You're a citizen, you're a private citizen or a public citizen. Do what you feel you need to do. I'm not gonna say this is what you need to do.
And we have been told by the mayor that we can't do anything. It's a dumb deal, we get no say in it outside of what gets put in. That is what the mayor, our mayor, said on Monday. We get no say. It is coming whether we want it or not.
Well, uh once you get with your HOA uh management, we can have a meeting. Go out, I'm not gonna get you what what you not do.
Position are you going? I didn't start.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm not, oh, you finished yourself? I don't know, I'm asking you.
You didn't answer my question. How are y'all gonna control the noise and the traffic that a community center will bring into this area? Lake Ridge is already, I mean, not Lake Ridge, but uh England Parkway is already a a thoroughfare.
Correct.
And Broad Street is already a nightmare, which I know Broad Street's in Mansfield, but it still affects this neighborhood. And y'all are putting a community center here that's gonna bring a lot of unwanted traffic in our neighborhood.
Sure, I can, like I mentioned earlier, we've always spoken to our congressional representatives to give us thirty, lower than thirty million dollars. And we're giving us close to a million dollars now to widen the roads on Lake Ridge Parkway.
You're still drawing people into this neighborhood that don't live up here. You're drawing unwanted, we all live down.
Please, explain what I mean by unwanted people from the neighborhood. What is that?
You're wanting to use it as a warming and cooling center. What does that specifically bring them?
On Grand Prairie, only Grand Prairie, no, no, it doesn't. Grand Prairie residents, that's what the council, the mayor, we talked about when we came down here. Right, you guys don't, I've talked to the Peds for Mar-a-Lago's and Grand Peninsula. When they said they don't, they don't want a Grand uh Grand Peninsula or Mar-a-Lago's personnel there. We said it has to go into all Grand Prairie residents if we use the mobile power station, and they said they don't wanna do that. So. I don't disagree with you on that. I agree with you on that. It's private. But if we're using city assets, why are we just gonna limit it to just Mar-a-Lago's residents and the Grand Peninsula powers out? What do we do? What 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 do you recommend we do?
Like somebody else said, why don't you even break the infrastructure, look what we're doing.
And our HOA has the option to build its own warming station. That was actually what happened on that call. If we needed it, we have the available resources to do it.
Okay. Ken, wanna talk about the Peds and the available resources down here to do that?
Kid and HOA are two different things.
He's on the Peds.
I'm talking about HOA. Our HOA just does the cost of that.
He's HOA president as well.
And he has the ability to draw those resources if we need.
And we can both.
We're gonna go here. The Peds budget down here is very tight. If you look at, if you look at the budget financially. Kevin, Ken, Ken knows the budget's real tight as far as what do you have left over after your expenditures. It's very tight. And once again, it's fine with me if it's built here or not built here. If your petition go and say, we don't want it, I I'm not gonna fight for it. I'm not fighting for it. I'm just trying to tell you my position where. When we knocked on doors in the political season, what the residents were saying. High end grocery store, no apartments, Recreation Center. Okay, uh done the no additional apartments. Would it brought a zoning change? I would have known for zoning change. But if it's the land by right has the right to build apartments, we can't deny it. Right now, we have with ten thousand units left to be built in Grand Prairie. I'm not happy to hear that. You gotta get more apartments, whether we like it or not. Here, I said we, because I live here too. I don't want any more apartments. So when we have a zoning change for the land from ag land or commercial real real estate to multifamily, I would have known. I I, there are people here know that, I've said no. They're trying to get a development through now that was turned out at P and Z, P and Z told them no. So. It it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me.
Can I jump in real quick? I beg your pardon. Uh let me first collect up all the pitchforks and torches real quick. Uh I wanna quickly address a comment that came out about crime. Uh let me be a hundred percent clear, I'm not an advocate for or against a rec center. Please don't start shooting at me. I just can assure you uh that I've been asked to look at that issue. I don't share your concern on the crime piece. I've looked at the crime as it relates to other rec centers. I don't see a uh evidence to suggest that that would be a uh. A catalyst for crime. That said, I'm not saying that your other concerns are not valid. Let me be clear, I I am not for or against a rec center. But I think this force has been beaten pretty good. Uh yes, sir, all right.
I'm gonna run away. All right. Yes.
I put the petition on my next door last night at three o'clock. Thank you. So you need to sign the petition. If you want there to be a change, you have to be the voice that makes the change. This is not my understanding, June, my understanding, Kurt, that this is not in concrete. Meaning it's not a dumb deal, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. It's not a dumb deal. They're really just trying to test, test it, test the temperature, for lack of a better word, to just see what we want. It's very clear that we don't want it, very clear. That we, you guys don't want it, right? So let me just finish it. So if there is the petition that I put on the, on Nextdoor, is to give you options. Of another location, thank you, June, that this can be built. Not have it built in between Mar-a-Lago and Grand Peninsula. I look at Grand Peninsula, I don't want it anymore. And there are another location that could be built if the city will take another look, is that three sixty. Whiteboard, oh, you're probably, you're hurting us, right? That's enough. So that, therefore, we need to go out on the next door, it is nifty, push your hand, sign that petition. That's the only thing that is going to give us a voice, because more people are on Nextdoor than are in this room. So please, read the petition and sign it.
I I don't wanna take over Councilmember Johnson's town hall, but what I do wanna state is that Councilmember Johnson Lopez, myself, we really care about this neighborhood, we care about the city. And we're bravely advocating, and what Kurt said is correct, that while knocking on doors in twenty twenty one, there was residents that said they wanted a community center. And Kurt has fought for that, definitely. So I I give him a lot of credit for that. If you all do not want a community center, fill out that petition, email council members, and let us know. The thing about Kurt, John, and myself, and everyone at the city, we listen to y'all. And if y'all tell us you don't want something, we're not gonna do it. So that's all I wanna say. Let your voices be heard. All Councilmember Johnson, Lopez, and myself, we're trying to do is to serve the city and to do what we believe is right, but we're not always correct. And the residents will let us know when we're wrong, and we're gonna listen to you. All right, next question, call me.
We have another question.
I I need to make sure everyone, one question asked, uh asked before we go back to the second question.
Okay, um thank you for holding this meeting. I just would like to point out to Mar-a-Lago's people, which I am still in Mar-a-Lago's and Grand Peninsula, you are not the only neighborhoods in District Six.
Thank you.
And you are also not the only people who have a voice. There are those of us who think the community center is a good thing. So where's our petition?
You wanna hear?
Yeah, okay, literally, we could walk out the back gate and walk across the street. And so we are looking to, looking forward to it, and we have answered that my question with me. Do you know how many people have answered the survey?
Unfortunately, the last time I heard on Monday was around a hundred, out of thirty some thousand people.
Yeah, I really need to get about any information that I have, but would help, thank you.
If you if you did get this in the mail, raise your hand, because you can scan right here tonight and go ahead and 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 voice your opinion.
With such a social society, there are so many other ways to communicate, but I I don't wanna be late.
I think people are abused, Kurt. They're confused. Because as I talk to people in my neighborhood, and I talk to people on Nextdoor, they're confused. They think this is this is a round.
No, they need to be here. Well, I gotta cut you off because we don't have much time. If people wanna ask questions, you're spoken. They should be here. You should have told them to come to the meeting tonight. And uh, once again, when we're knocking on doors, we say this one last time, it's a political thing. We're gonna target certain doors and knock on. If you're not a voter in the city elections and you have no solicitation on your doors, then that's not gonna go nowhere. They're not gonna, this is not gonna do it. So I'll take a question from.
This is a code compliance, but um it seems that a lot of code violations occur on the weekend. Does Code have any plans for a code crawl, sending code officers out over the weekend to write warnings? For initial violations and circle back another so later and write violations.
So Code does have to, it works on the weekends. Uh it is limited staff, most of the staff is here Monday to Friday. If we know the specific issue that is occurring solely on the weekends, then please let us know about that, and we can redirect more resources uh to be here on the weekend to address it.
Hi, I have a question for Carol, I think the transportation. Um I'm not sure if this is your category or not, but um I have a son that goes to Reagan. And um the school zone over there is tiny. And so I was curious if there would be a way to look at extending the school zone, because kids are crossing the streets. And spots that are not um covered under a school zone. And to me, I think it's pretty dangerous. Even my son, you know, he doesn't, like eighth graders don't care about anything. This is dangerous.
Yes, it definitely is that. And often we try to, if it's there, we're crossing the people that, you can't, there's a pause, there's a delay, because they're longer than they need to be. But if we discover they're crossing the school spirit, then yeah, we'll work with you on that.
All right, next question. All right, wait, is there another one?
Go ahead, sir, answer the question.
Okay, my question is, uh my name is Philip Richardson. I live in the uh Mahoy section there. Um my question is for you and for the chief, uh on Saturday. Uh several people in that neighborhood are victims of crime spree, uh that came through there, right? And so we've been talking, and we wanna try to start a, start a neighborhood watch. So how do we do that, and how do we get that neighborhood watch sign uh to get that going?
Sir, I'm standing behind you. Let me recap the question, make sure I heard it correctly. Uh the the crux of your question was that you noticed some issues in crime in your neighborhood, you wanna start a neighborhood watch? And you want neighborhood watch signs. Is that, my informants inform me correctly?
Okay.
Uh so on that, that. Uh, so on that, that table right over there, man, I'm glad you didn't ask a question about a community center. I feel stupid about this. Uh, on, on that table over there is a bar, it's, it's, uh, Kedrick Dixon. It, it's, it's, uh, he goes by KD. He, uh, is our quarterback for starting the, uh, uh, community, uh, watch. We would love it if you would get involved in that. Uh, get with him, we'll get the signs out there. That part is easy. Uh, but they actually, part of their metrics by which, uh, I judge their performance is starting up neighborhood watch groups. So you just gave him a softball, man. So he'll love the call.
Thank you. Next question.
Thank you, and I would have to talk to Paul too. My name is April Adrian, Vice President of the Peds for Greenway Trail. Thank you all for coming tonight. My question is for Dr. Redfern about the trash receptacles for our community. Um, he had had some conversation at councils last year that, and I believe the contract was due to expire October twenty twenty-four. We were told that there was going to be some type of interim or something an alternative to just putting our bags out, and so if we could get an update on that, we appreciate it.
Hi, thank you for the question. The contract, the current contract with Republic Services expires October seventeenth of twenty twenty-eight. And where we're at right now, we have had the survey, fifty percent of the, or forty-six percent of the community wants the carts. And is willing to, was willing to pay for them when we did the survey. Forty-six percent of the community doesn't want the carts, doesn't wanna pay for them. Seven percent of the community wanted the carts, but doesn't wanna pay anymore for their, their garbage bill. And that really wasn't an option on the table for Republic. And then the last one percent didn't want the carts, but was willing to pay more, which didn't make any sense. But the long and the short of it, that was true. The long and the short of it was, um, we would be training one group for the other group if we bring the carts. So the decision by council at that time was not necessarily no, but not now. Now is not the time to bring carts. So where we're at is kind of back to square one.
We have to refer one to our tracks.
Yes.
So we need trash receptacles.
I agree, the trash receptacles are a great solution for, no, I, I, I agree. The reality of it is Republic isn't going to bring them to us for no, no additional cost. We've gotta get the price right. We really do. So it's a matter of negotiation, bringing the right circumstances to the community. I wish, I want the carts yesterday. I truly do. I like the carts. I don't have, I don't have cars.
But I wish, when you say, um, the survey, what you did with that all?
The survey went to the entire city.
That's exactly.
We are aware that you guys were not developed, but they not have been fully developed, but someone in that community, the residents in those homes probably got a survey. No difference than people got this. We're not supposed to have gone up to everybody. And no, we're gonna have a hundred responses. That was on Monday. It's Thursday now, and that's why I'm. Say again? Right, exactly. Just like, there's a developer that we spoke to that went to PNC on Monday night. Wanted to develop down south. There's no ones within three hundred foot radius, wanted to develop, but they listened to Greenway Trails. See, I'm trying to bring people into that conversation so they know it's, uh, being proposed. Because you were not there when they proposed and voted for the apartments that you, you're not happy with right now.
Right.
So.
He wanted to bring your apartment, why you say no?
Uh, correct, and that's why they voted it down. So.
Well, the last thing I, I'd like to say on it is that, you know, the contract apparently has been renewed and it's changed.
Well, that was a ten-year contract, so it, it expires twenty twenty-eight.
And there's no opportunity to renegotiate it.
Sure there is. Absolutely.
Because.
It's, it's just money.
Willing to give up something else to give back, because it is a safety issue. To have.
And the trails are dead, they're dead, they're dead. Okay, all right, let's move on to the next question. Who's next? Who's next?
Uh, I just wanna say one thing on that. Let me assure you that Dr. Redfern has been working diligently to try to find a way to address the issues that are facing regarding the birds tearing up the garden and going all over there. We have not discounted that. We're working diligently right now to look at options that what might be available to you. Yes, our contract doesn't expire to twenty twenty-eight, but we are working and looking at renegotiating that contract prior to twenty twenty-eight in order to address some of those issues that you faced. Now, that's, we're still working on. One of the things that I don't think, I can give you a longer answer. Short answer is, they don't want to do it. The supply chain, they can't get the trucks to do it.
Hold on a second.
But we, we have a, but the Peds, we have exclusive contracts.
Ask a question. Because we, we had discussions on that. Uh, anyone else have, have a question? We've got four minutes left. This is a gentleman over here.
So my name is, I live in Grand Peninsula. This ain't like really a serious question. Y'all, some excellent voice, by the way. Um, but over here by Grandway and Lakewood, we got these, all these homes coming up. Is there any plan to put like a traffic light there? Because eventually what's gonna happen is with more and more people, apartments and more people in the homes, it's gonna be harder for them to get onto Whitebridge. So I'm just something I noticed, because I, I have to come back to it a lot of times when I.
Of course, it again.
Yeah, Grandway, sorry, Grandway and, uh, Whitebridge, that intersection right there, where that, you know, where the new apartment is. You know, where the new development is right there. Is there any plans to like?
There's no, uh, are there any of the parks now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And as it, as things get warrant, we will do continuous warrant councils. The signals are warranted for the National Make. Um, that will be programmed, designed, and, uh, it's kind of, we've got a, Kim Wisdom, it's already on the way into resign, it's gonna be built. I'm afraid we're gonna have to go to that precursor, but sometimes that happens. But as they meet warrants, then we're able to do that.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, like, there's more people losing their projects and homes, so I was like, oh, sorry. Okay, one last question. We have, uh, two minutes. And two minutes only, I start on time, I end on time, so softball. She took the floor.
Uh, this question is for Greenway Trail. Uh, we have, coming into Greenway Trails, we have a four-way stop sign. And it's really dark over there. So people don't stop, they continue to go through. Is there any way we can get the four-way stop signs to flash? Stop.
In Greenway Trails, there's a stop, the stop sign is, the four-way stop sign, it wants to be flashed. Because of my time.
People don't continue to become desensitized to, so I'm trying to experiment where they are, where we have true visibility issues. Where somebody might be missing it, where we might have an enforcement issue.
True visibility issues, but some people don't stop. They keep going.
And sometimes that's behavioral, but we are on it here. So which approach and which intersection are you talking about?
It's kind of an issue for Redfern, when it holds the, the.
Double like inheritance is becoming a signal. That school is building that, as it gets, it did design, we've got a hole zone, and that's about to be built into the signalized intersection by the development of that.
Why is there a red and white line law? It's like.
I believe so, yes. Yeah, we've been reviewing the plans with them, and the, the, uh, school development is building that signal, so it's coming.
Okay, that's, uh, start calling. Could you get the mic?
So I'm Stacy, and I did get permission, um, from my board that I could send out information to my homeowners of send anything to that you want to get out to or to put in our homes.
For the online audience. Okay, so I'm Stacy. Um, but I can send out information to the homeowners uh, in regards to like this community center, so that they can put in their feedback. And, and then anything else in general?
Yeah, please, uh, I will send this up to Stacy. Most of you, some of you know that I'm on Nextdoor. I do read it and I read the comments of things that's going in the city. Also have a, a Grand Prairie District Six Nextdoor page where I post up there as well. Uh, I then posted a thing with the community center, because when we mailed out all the flyers, that's what I've been told by the staff, that everybody in the city got a copy. So, uh, and I have to believe that, that we, we spent the money on that. So with that being said, I, I appreciate you guys coming out, these were good questions. Uh, I'm always happy to answer or the staff to answer your questions. Uh, if you, I'm gonna stay around, if you have any more questions for me, I'm here to answer, but I appreciate you guys coming out tonight and have a safe.